Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the Gladstone City Council work session for September 13th, 2015. It is now 5:30, 7:00 PM. Following the work session, we'll have a regular meeting. The work session will be to discuss town hall meeting coming up on October 22nd.
Hello? And that's my number. I'll call you right back.
Okay.
Gotta run.
Okay, go, Pat.
Anyway...
We probably don't need him now that we got a quorum.
Okay.
So we can go forth, anyway.
Tammy, will you do the roll call, please?
I will. Counselor Seigman?
Here.
Counselor Mercierow?
Absent.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Turner?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
He will be dialing in.
Counselor Reisner?
He will be late.
Mayor Jacobellus?
Here.
Okay. Please, let us begin with the town... Discussion of the Town Hall Meeting. So, Ross, you want me to start, or you want to...
Yeah, I think so. You and I kinda got that same stuff going.
So generally, the rough outline of this so far, and we wanna run it by you guys, see how you think it flows, and then we can get into the meat and potatoes of it. It starts at 6 o'clock. There'll be meet and greet time at 6:30, I think?
Yes.
Will be the official stand-up at the front, or sit up at the front time, start time. I'm gonna be the emcee. Basically, I'm gonna welcome everybody. I'm gonna outline the process for the town hall meeting, which will include the order of presentations, and we'll get to that in a minute. We'll talk about question and answer sessions at the end. We're gonna offer them the opportunity that if they wanna ask questions, they feel free to raise their hand at the end and, you know, ask the question, or they can fill out cards. And Tammy will go around and be... You know, if they don't feel comfortable, she'll be picking up these question cards, and I'll read them at the end of all the presentations. So I'll give them that outline, give them a rough idea of the phone boards that'll be around the outside of the room. And then, we'll start off with Ross giving us a presentation on his little pyramid project, which is, I think you've seen it in the office.
Oh, yes, yes.
Anyway, it's a... Basically, a business model structure, and the importance of it. So he'll give his little... Uh-oh, that's Pat McMahon again.
Is he calling, or...
He's calling on his regular phone.
And we'll just call him right back, if you...
Sorry, folks. Hey, Pat? You're back, yeah? Okay, we're gonna call you right now on the... On the other lines, he'll hang up.
Is there a redial on this?
No, because when you dial...
The one that... Well, whatever they just called you at, okay. They're gonna try you on your phone, so hang up. Bye. God, this is complicated stuff. Let me just do Skype. Steve, can you get some Skype action going?
503.
Sure.
Even got an extra computer, you can have it do it.
0527.
Then we could all just do it from home. We could all Skype in.
We could have a quorum, would you?
We could do it, we could have a quorum on Skype.
Theoretically, you could.
Yeah.
Counselor McMahon here.
Very good. Thank you for joining us again.
Oh, it's my pleasure.
I was just giving them, kinda, Pat, a brief outline. Me and Ross have talked about the process, so I was just kinda giving the guys and gals here a brief outline of the way we think this town hall might go. We haven't actually got to the meat and potatoes of where, what people are gonna do. So just to encapsulate real quick, the meet and greet will be from 6:00 to 6:30. At 6:30, I'll welcome everyone, give them the outline of the process. Hello? Okay. Tell them, you know, what to expect, you know, the presentations by the city manager, then the council members, that there'll be a question and answer period at the end of all the presentations, that they have the availability of either raising their hand and asking a question, or filling out a question card, which will be collected by Tammy Bannack, and they'll be read by me at the end of the session, at the end of the presentations. I then will introduce Ross, the city manager. He's gonna do his little pyramid business model structure, and kinda go through that, and explain why it's important, as far as, you know, it relates to the city of Gladstone. I think next on the... Next in the batting order will be Kim. I'll introduce him, and let him whale away on the library slash ballot measure. And again, I'm just gonna introduce, I'm not saying anything, and here's a guy, he batted third for the New York Yankees, and I'm just gonna say, hey, here's Counselor Seigman.
Other than we hate the Yankees, could it be the Red Sox?
Hey, you're gonna get disconnected here in a minute. So then, it'll be Kim to do his deal on the library ballot measure. Then I'll introduce Neil Reisner, as far as speaking about parks. Then it'll be you, Pat, regarding the staff positions and the process. Then down to Tom Mercierow, who'll talk about the project list, and then finally with Steve Johnson talking about the Tri-Cities. And was there something else? Did we saddle you with something else?
No, but we were gonna talk about the Charter Committee, too. We're gonna add that in somewhere. Tri-City is all that I have.
Okay.
Will you take the Charter Committee, or do the...
I think I can.
Sure? That'd be great.
Okay, yeah.
I could say a few words about Charter as well.
All right, so Steve will have Tri-Cities and the Charter Committee. And then, then I'll close. I'll give a presentation, just real briefly, on the master plans, the ones that are already done, the one that's in process, the importance of them, and specifically, I'll tie it back into the facilities, and what those master plans mean, try to tie the ballot measure back in, using the master plans and the vision and all that kinda stuff. I will make... And we talked about a theme, me and Ross, just kinda... My thought, and I think Ross, and I don't know what you guys think, but I think the whole idea is that this positivity, this moving forward, this where we're going to be headed, as opposed to where we've been and how we've gotten into this position. So along those lines, I'm gonna say something of the effect to, you know, we're kinda, as councilors and as a city, we wanna stop just being a passenger on the bus. We wanna stop looking out the window at things happening, and waiting for something catastrophic to happen. That's kinda the way we've been operating, and we wanna start driving the bus. We wanna start to be able to make decisions not under that gun. Oh, we gotta fix this, oh, we gotta fix that. It's not a good way to run a business, nor is it a good way to run a city. So we're just kinda looking ahead, and we're kinda... That's our mantra. We wanna kinda keep ahead of the curve. Certainly, I will then, with some kind of a statement along those lines, start talking about our accomplishments, which will basically highlight everybody's presentations. And I'm not gonna say much, but I'm just gonna say, for instance, you know, instead of, you know, along those lines, you know, you look at the staff, people that were going, were in the position now of either searching for, or in the process of hiring, you know, we've defined and identified the need for an account manager. What that's gonna do is, you know, help us move forward. You heard Pat talk about the fire chief selection. You heard Pat talk about the new city manager. All of those things were defined and identified by us as necessary for us to be able to move forward and change things. So, oh, the Public Works Director. So again, I'm just gonna highlight what Pat said, and then I'll talk about, again, the ballot measure and library, you know. We're going through the process. We've talked about it. We're, you know, trying to identify property. Once we're there, it's happening. You know, we've identified the money, we've identified the revenue source, there's no sense to talk about it anymore. We're just gonna come to a decision, and it's gonna get done. We're gonna start planning it and start moving forward.
So, I think it's the Iacocca deal. You tell them what you're gonna tell them, you guys are gonna tell them what you're telling them, and he's gonna wrap it back up and tell them what you told them. In all of that, I still think there needs to be some theme that everybody can weave into their presentation, you know. You know, I like that we're not passengers on the bus anymore, we're actually driving the bus, you know, or something that gets you back to that theme, because you guys have been here for seven months, some of you, some not, but I think in that seven or, well, I guess nine months now, things have changed, and that changes like you guys are going to, and I don't know what you think the change is, but you're not riding anymore, you are steering. And, you know, that's a big difference, that's a big change in nine months, and there's things that have happened that show that you're steering, you're not just floating along. So I think that's up to you guys to come up with that theme, but I think you ought to have some soundbite, that when everybody leaves, they've heard it so many times, that's what's going on at the city. You know, they're steering the ship now, it's no longer just floating. That's great stuff.
And I just threw that... I don't... And I agree. I don't care what it is, but I really do think it's important that we're... Whatever it is, like you said, if it happens in two or three segments, then they've heard it enough where it's like, yeah, this is real, this is what they believe, this is their mantra, this is what's happening.
I used... I'm still working on my presentation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One of the terms that I used, that I kinda kept thinking that I need to put more in there, moving Gladstone forward, is...
I like that. I mean, that's simple to the point, and that's what you guys are doing. You know, if everybody said that at least once, they'd hear it seven times.
And that's just a thought. I mean, that's one I came up with in my writings. There's probably a better one out there, but...
It works pretty well. I can see that for Charter. I may have to work on it a little bit for Sewer District, but...
But you are. I mean, that's, you know, you are moving us forward.
It's a good phrase. I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
I think it's great. I think if we hit it, boom. And we're all about moving it forward, I mean...
I agree.
Oh, I forgot he...
From the phone.
Disembodied voice.
One question for you, and I don't know... One, I don't know if it's appropriate and fits, but one of the things that I think is... I think it's important, but it may have an issue with staying positive, upbeat. I think it might be kinda nice for the citizens to know what you walked into your first day in here. I mean, to give them some idea, we can tell them where we're at today, but if they don't know where we came from... And it's... It's very edgy and very careful. But I just...
There's a computer right there. I'll be back in a couple minutes.
I'm kinda not... I'm gonna say no. I really don't, only because that just kinda drags us back to that whole thing. And is it important for them to know? Eh, maybe. I mean, if they wanna ask a question of what it was like, or whatever, but I think they get a sense. Most of the people I run into are like, geez, how bad is it? And I just say, eh, you know.
You know, that's where I'm gonna be for him, I think, is I'm gonna show you the pyramid, and I'm gonna show you where we're deficient, so you're gonna have that pyramid with deficiencies on it, and all of you could come back to those deficiencies and say, you know, moving us forward, we're working on staffing plan right now, you know, we got five new people. We're working on public safety improvements, and we're doing this, and this, and this. So you'll be able to see off of that pyramid where the deficiencies are, and how you guys are moving us forward. I think that would be the value to me going forward.
And maybe even familiarizing ourselves more with your pyramid.
Right.
Especially if you're gonna lead it off, it could always come back in the statement.
Right.
And this is where this fits in...
Right.
In the pyramid structure to move us forward.
That's part of what you're moving forward. You've asked me to come in and tell you where you've got deficiencies. You knew some of them, but, you know, so now we're up in that strategic part, moving us forward. I like that moving Gladstone forward deal.
After nine months, we own the problems. I mean, they're ours now, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, what you're saying, if we had a town hall meeting in January, that might have had, you know, there might have been room for it, but I think now we oughta let the past go, and, I mean, we're in charge, and it's ours to own and to deal with, so I think it becomes too negative if you go back to it now.
Well, and that's not a direction I wanted to go, either.
Yeah, yeah.
So my... The only two things I'm really... My presentation, so to speak, is going to be on the master plans, where they're at, what they mean, how they're gonna help define us, and really, the kinda code enforcement, neighborhood livability piece. We'll have some stats from the police department about their hotline, and blah, 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 blah. And then the rest of it is just kinda like I said, Ross brought up a good point, and this is... You had mentioned this before, Steve, is, you know... We have done a ton of heavy lifting, so it would be nice to kinda just bullet them out as far as, you know, we've got a new management, we're working on a new permanent city manager. We've sent, for the first time, I think, and maybe you could help out, I didn't write this yet, but we sent the county helped send two councilors to the Main Street Revitalization Conference, National Conference in Atlanta, so they could have a firsthand look and understanding as how that program works, and what it could be relatable to hear. We strengthened our regional partnerships across the board. I mean, every... The Tri-Cities, you know, Metro, Clackamas County, Department of Transportation, all of those people, we have now formed relationships with that are... Can do nothing but help the other cities, the cities around us. We now have working relationships with those people that help us garner support, leverage possible money, which it already has. It turned out to be grant money. So I'm gonna talk about the regional partnerships. I'm also gonna talk, just, again, a real short bullet point, how we've improved our relationship with the school district, how that... And the future of that, why it's important for this city. And, you know, these kids live here, and if we don't do something to help the school board, we can't just end school at 3:30 and then expect them to be perfect model citizens without any kinda support. We need to have a better partnership with them. So we'll talk a little bit about the First T Program and that scholarship deal. Again, admitted on each one of these, just to list the accomplishments. We could talk about the public safety improvements, you know, the... You know, we just... Fire chief, the fire chief, the emergency management, you know, going to a new fire chief, you know, working with Jeff Jolly, and his... The programs he's trying to pass through, the problem-oriented policing, asking for a volunteer. What do you think about, as long as we're talking, Mr. Ross? Don't look away from me. Highlighting the newest reserves that we hired?
Hmm, good.
Including a...
I hate to be too blatant about that.
Yeah, yeah.
You missed the Civic Buildings Committee. I mean, we sat a committee.
Yeah, that's true.
They met, and they came up with solid recommendations, and I think we've accepted their recommendations.
Yeah, we did.
And, I mean, that's an accomplishment. There are actually many accomplishments when you start putting together a list.
And I don't... My... Like I said, the more, the better. I mean, again, I'm not gonna belabor it, I'm just gonna say we...
Well, yeah, you don't wanna miss everything, but anything. But I'm wondering, can that list be passed around? I mean, can we get a starter list, and then add to it? Well, I can't look at you, but, like, maybe I can.
There's a phone board that's got those accomplishments on it.
Right.
Or, you know, says 2015, you know, moving Gladstone forward, and, you know, so when people are milling around, asking you guys questions, you can walk to the phone board and say, hey, there he is.
Sure. All right, so how about this? So to further that, because he's gonna talk about deadlines in a minute, how about, can you send an email to them on this list right tonight, and then whatever else?
Yeah.
You guys wanna add to it?
My point is, absolutely.
Jump back to the reserves, real quick. Not understanding why we wouldn't wanna do that, but if we're highlighting personnel, that might be an issue, but I think we could highlight getting the reserve program more... I mean, it's all... We've always had one guy.
We had four once.
But we could take...
Oh, I think that's good, but I think the makeup of that reserve might be a little...
A bit much?
Yeah, 'cause, yeah.
What? We got an Asian. Careful now.
Hey, I'll let you guys go where you go in Gladstone.
I'm just thinking we could highlight...
That's not bad, right?
But it wasn't that...
Can't we say Asian American?
I would not, no.
I wouldn't go with the diversity theme, that's not where you guys are.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up.
I think it's exciting, but...
But for several years, we've had one reserve.
All right. So we just say, we got the reserve program, they just hired three new reserves.
That might be under Mr. McMahon's...
Staffing?
Staffing issue, I mean...
Okay. Copy.
Public safety, you know, we got new reserves on board.
And didn't we swear some reserves in once before already?
Saturday.
Well, before that.
Yeah, I think we've had a couple of swearing since I've been here.
Yeah, so there may be more. I think there's more than just those three.
But two. I know I've signed...
Who went away?
I know I've signed more than three letters, so someplace there are...
But I think that, at least, we got one more, so we went from one...
To four, at least.
At least.
Must have more than four, if he's done it twice, because the issues where we had four, and then we lost two or three, were all prior to Ross coming on board, so...
How about... Hey, Pat?
Yeah?
Uh, how about, can you then make sure you have the numbers between January and now, how many we've done?
Yes. I will talk to the candidate.
And didn't we do the same thing with the fire department? Didn't we just...
We just added...
Yep, I could do the same thing with them as well.
That'd be awesome.
I'll talk to Jeff on that. Both Jeffs.
Because that was January or February, I think, that new fire came on board.
Well, we just finished getting, I think, three...
Yeah.
Three through all the steps that are now new volunteers.
They started back in January, I think they were sworn in, and so now they're... Okay, yeah. It'd be interesting to know about that, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, I think they have four that are almost done with probation in January, and they just started a new academy with three.
Yeah. So on the fireside, what does that mean? How much couch time is that for probation?
Uh, a year.
All right. I'm sorry, we're in a public area.
Okay, so we're just about done with the work session. Is there anything else we should be looking at? I'm gonna sit around and listen to accomplishments, and you guys are gonna update them.
Are we still doing a dry run at some point?
Yeah, the 13th is supposed to be a talk-through. But I need your input for phone boards by probably the 9th of October. So I probably need to get those to Oregon Blueprint by Monday, or they won't be ready by the 15th, which is supposed to be the staff dry run, where you guys are gonna go live with your dry run, so...
The 13th? Do you got 13th and 15th, or...
The 13th is our next council session.
Right.
So I was thinking if there's any... You know, that might be a talk-through dry run, where the 15th would be go-live dry run, you've got all the bells and whistles, and you're saying your whole presentation. Unless you guys wanna get together again before the 13th and do...
The 15th is at whiffs, before city staff, is that...
Yeah.
Okay.
That's gonna be 8 o'clock, or 8:30, I can't remember which one.
At the senior?
At the senior.
Senior was 8:30.
Yeah. Okay, I think it was, too.
So...
But we've added the 13th now.
Well, the 13th is our council session, so we have an opportunity for a work session. We're doing a lot of things on the 13th.
I was gonna say, it's gonna be a busy night, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's not do this, and I guess you got the 15th for a dry run, but I need your phone board material by the 9th.
And I think we can have an agenda item for the 13th in case we need to discuss it.
Okay.
You know, but then we can just say, you know what, I think we're all good.
Okay. I'll leave it on the work session afterwards, possible work session.
So are we doing, like, for instance, when I dial mine in, do you guys want, you know, on regular city email? Is that how you want my presentation?
Yeah. There's no reason why you can't put your presentation... Actually, I think it'd be best if I was the funnel, because as I get the stuff in, I'll start keeping track of the phone boards and that sort of stuff, and I'll make sure everybody has a current copy. I'll probably do the phone boards on PowerPoint, so if everybody's got that, you can look at the whole presentation.
I hate to ask this question, but doesn't this go back to this whole...
Can I have some... May I... This is a council meeting. May I freely discuss ballot major and council positions on that in our meeting here?
Not here. Um, no, I think you can.
Okay, I just...
As long as you're not using... Of course, I don't know, now you're using your time, you're using council, you're using city resources to talk about stuff. That's just the fine line, is all.
Because it's what I... We know what my topics are.
Right.
And the library topic is open.
Right.
The ballot measure topic is a little different. We, as councilors, all have our own rights, our own opinions, all of this stuff, and we can deal with this, as long as we use no staff time, we use no staff resource, no city resources.
Okay, guys, we gotta run again. Sorry about that.
Okay, Pat.
I'll call you back for the big vote.
We've got a quorum, Pat, if you don't... You don't need to come back.
I will call back in 10 minutes for the vote, 'cause you need it for the vote, right?
No, we do not. We have a quorum.
We don't need you, we have a quorum.
Oh, you have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm off for a traffic accident then.
All right. Thank you.
See you later. You bet.
See ya.
Bye.
Yeah, I think so. Should do it.
Anyway, I have got a couple of things on my presentation. Right now, I'm running right around eight minutes on it. I know we wanted to keep them five to seven. I don't believe I'm gonna be able to shorten it, so I'm gonna ask the council's indulgence of maybe seven to 10 minutes versus the seven-minute limit, because of the importance of... And timeliness of what I'm talking about. I intend on... I've had a couple of people review my documents, I've sent it out to a couple more, and when I get feedback from that, I'll make edits, and then I'll send it out to the final two. One of the reasons I need to do that is because I would like to make the statement, as a counselor, and that I am speaking on behalf of city council, supporting a ballot measure item. And I wanna make sure that that is exactly the way we feel unanimously, if I'm gonna make that comment. And so I think it's very important for my stuff to be vetted by everybody. When you're giving out information, I don't know that it's so much necessary to be vetted by everybody.
Well, let me put it this way. I think the... My only take on it is, it's not critical, but I think it would be helpful to have that input to say, yeah, I get it, yeah, I get it, but where's the message? Where's the theme in this? Uh, could you add a sentence maybe saying this? Uh, I think it would be helpful that, then it would be more consistent amongst us of what we're saying. I, I mean, that's my only thing, we could get up, and everybody could give a presentation, and they could be very good, but they could be disjointed, they could just be basically, this is the facts, this is the facts, this is the facts, this is the facts, and everybody's like, oh, okay.
I, I agree.
Alright.
I, I think that's a great way to do it, I like collaborative efforts. Um, now, if we start running into disagreements on it, um-
Well, hey, the bottom line is some, you get, whoever's gonna go up and speak is, it's their bailiwick. And if they don't wanna listen to three other people saying, hey, you know, I don't know, it's just food for thought. I just think it's better to have that, at least those eyes on it, to be consistent and say, at least the theme is there. I may not agree with the way the message was written, but the theme is there, yes, sir, you were gonna say something?
No, I just hit my arm on that.
I, I think because it's the ballot measure, um, the time is not of a concern to me. In fact, I'm trying to keep mine shorter, to leave more time for him to, uh, to go over it. Um, as for the, uh, you know, speaking for the council, um, that, that could have some merit. I mean, that, you know, if the seven of us can come together and go, yes, we endorse this, then he can say we, uh, instead of I, and, and be talking for the council as a whole. In that particular issue, I'd, I'd be okay with that, and I've already seen most of what he's written. Unless he makes some radical changes, I'm already ready, I could endorse it. Um, but I, I think that that has some strength, if he can say we and be speaking for the council as a whole.
And I don't, I, I agree, I, I really, I don't see a problem, I just, I, I just think if, if at all possible, at least if we can put our eyes on it and say, hey, it looks good to me, or, hey, did you think about, maybe you could add that? You know, that kinda thing, which, you know, will just make it better.
Yeah.
And, but, the caveat to that, just like his deadline for the foam board, the deadlines, we talked about this way early on, there's gotta be a deadline on this, don't give me your edit changes the night before, 'cause it ain't gonna happen. 'Cause I'm terrible as, I'm lucky if I get this on the computer. Um, so what do you want for a deadline? Do you want the ninth, just like his foam board, to be the deadline for edits?
Sounds reasonable.
What do you think? Is that enough time?
Well, that means that you have to get it out before the ninth.
Yeah, 'cause ninth is a Friday, he's on holiday.
Alright, well, how about?
So we have to, you-
Well, I, I'd like to have your information Monday morning, I mean, that's what I'm really shooting for, that's why I called the ninth, because then I know I get it Monday morning.
The twelfth.
But, but the foam board, but not, do you want the edits, you don't necessarily really care about the edits, do you?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is on the ninth, or, on the twelfth morning of, I'm gonna send all those foam boards out to be-
Right.
Published, and so they gotta be a hundred percent, yeah.
This is the speeches, and I think, um-
I mean, the speeches can change right up to night of, I mean.
I mean, I would, I would almost like to see all edits be back by the ninth.
Well, today's, tomorrow's the first. First, so that means we've gotta get them to you in a reasonable amount of time, and I haven't even started pecking at the computer yet. I'm the worst, and this is gonna suck. Anyway, um, alright, well, why don't-
Well, let's just-
Why don't we shoot for the ninth, shoot for the ninth, and all edits to be back by the ninth, and so that means, if you get it to us on the eighth, you suck, you're the worst guy in the world.
Well, you, you have mine.
No, no, I mean, me, me, speaking me.
I don't.
Alright.
I was just getting ready to back the bus up.
Yes, sir, I, I, some clarity on, on communications here. Um, I got, I'm sorry, Pat has, has left, I got an email from Pat that said, uh, let's all collaborate by personal email, and we can talk about this there. And, one, I get a little nervous using my business email for city business, if it ever gets subpoenaed, you know, that sort of thing. The other is, now we've got essentially what we can't have on the city's email, where we're sending out to everybody all at once, are we into some gray area here, or?
It's only if you make a decision, so, like, the fact that you're collaborating on written stuff, I don't really think that's a decision, if you were collaborating on, uh, the trans-sue property, and you all were coming up with a, uh, you know, terms and agreement or something, I think that's different than talking about a speech you're gonna give.
So, why can't we use the city's email, is it because it's city resources then, or?
The only thing, you could use the city email for any of this, except anything to do with the ballot measure.
And that's why he suggested, see, and those are just, I think Pat's just talking about strategies to get the word out-
Right.
For the ballot measures, the-
Right.
'Cause I was like you, I'm like, well, this kinda slaps in the face of the whole keep the business thing, but then we're playing this game where he can't be involved, and we can't use city resources to forward these information, so he suggested, I think his suggestion about making it all private, then we could just strategize, hey, you know, which brought up a point, did we talk to the clackamas review yet, did we do this, did we do that, that kinda stuff.
And that's, so you've got really two different issues going, one is you've got this ballot going on, and that's where I think you use your personal email accounts, whatever, you've got to do that. But the city stuff, there's no reason why we can't coordinate through city stuff as long as you're not making a decision. You know, you're talking about historical things, and how to present them, and all that, if you're talking about, hey, you know, I, I really wanna fire the city manager, uh, what do you guys all think about that? That's, that's going into the realm of doing-
You're deliberating at that point.
Yeah, deliberating.
Deliberating.
That, yeah, that's deliberating and making a decision online, and I think you can even deliberate through the email, you just can't make the decision where you go, hey, I'm in favor of this, I'm in favor of this, I'm in favor of this, and then you come to the meeting, and it's all stacked, um.
I just don't want my email to be Hillary Clinton, you know, um, it's important work email, um, and I'd hate to see it get subpoenaed somewhere along the line, so, I'm always a little hesitant to do that.
I don't know, get yourself a Gmail account or something, and-
That could, I've got some garbage accounts I could use.
Yeah, I mean, just use something like that, and then keep it out of your work realm altogether, but-
Okay, alright. What do we think? Any other, I mean, does this sound like that's the progression?
Yeah.
We good with it?
Room's, room's gonna be set up, coffee cookies, is somebody's taking care of that, or?
Yep, uh, that's, that's me and, and Jolene are gonna do that, probably gonna be Tammy, she's my new BFF with Jolene on, on, uh-
Are we planning on using any technology?
And I think that's up to you guys, um-
We've talked about it, and what do you guys think? I mean, my thought, the foam board resonates with me more than that PowerPoint, because once you do the PowerPoint, it's gone, you know what I mean, it, it, it's like you see it on the screen, then it's gone. The foam boards, they can mull, they can see it, they look at it, they're like, what the hell does that mean? What's that pyramid thing about, blah, 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 and, you know, and then it can come back to it afterwards and say, hey, what's, what's this thing right here? That's just my take on it.
You know, I might, uh, if you guys, if that's okay, if the foam boards are okay, I'm jumping ahead of you a little bit, but I think is what I'm gonna do is start putting together a list of foam boards that I would propose, because, you know, I, I'd probably have one for Tri-City somehow or another, I don't know whether you wanna talk from it, but, you know, each of you could have three to five foam boards for your presentation, and, you know, there would be some other ones that show the pilgrims on the Mayflower, or whatever, I mean, throughout the deal, so you can kinda almost decorate with them as well, so. You gotta set up foam boards for your presentation, and you gotta set out in the crowd, I, I don't know, I, or unless you wanna pick all the ones from the crowd and make them your presentation ones, but, I just need to start writing down headings for foam boards, so I can start getting those roughed out, and, and Tammy can get them taken care of.
I know that the county has provided some nice PowerPoint-ish type things, like pictures of where sewer districts are.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe something like that could be on the foam board, so you can see the map.
Right.
This is what we're talking about.
Maps are always good for foam boards.
I'll look through that and see if I find-
Yeah.
Do we need a, do we need a, what do they call it, chart pack at all? Does anybody think we're gonna need a need for a chart pack up there?
A what?
You know, whiteboard, or-
The, you know, the-
Flip, flipboard.
Whatever they call, we call them chart packs, whatever you want.
Probably not, dude, I don't think there'll be enough time, but if it was, it was pre-written, maybe, you know, but then you're back to the foam board.
You know what, it might not be a bad idea to have one in the room.
Yeah, I agree.
And then, if somebody comes to you and says, hey, what about this? You could just walk over and say, you know what, let's, kinda similar to what we had set up at the park, well, let's just put it up there on the list, um.
Oh, that's, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah, have it available, somebody might use it, rather have it than not have it.
Yeah.
I could get a couple of them, and you could have one for, uh, town hall to-dos or something, and if one of you guys gets a to-do, you could walk over to the board and say, we'll put it on there, and, uh, so people could have a way to get back, and then we'll have just another blank one where you can just go draw, here's my all-purpose business growth graph that I always-
The only other-
Yeah?
Is it gonna be recorded? Is the meeting gonna need to be recorded with the city councilors?
Uh, yes, I think we'll, I don't, I'm not quite certain how to do that, we might film it. Probably oughta ask your, uh, school audiovisual people to come.
You know, I did reach out, uh, to see, and I knew, to tell you the truth, it was problematic before, even doing it in the school building, when we ran our retreats over there, and...
Some of that was microphone-related, we did the retreats, we had to have all the microphones set up.
But there's something, I'll talk, I'll try to talk to him tomorrow.
Well-
And I think Pat, I wish Pat was on the phone, but Pat, didn't Pat, in his little email, say that he reached out to the school board guy, and he didn't wanna do something, or put it in his school newspaper, or something?
That, yeah, that, that was specifically ballot measure related.
Oh, okay, alright, alright.
That was strictly ballot measure related.
Oh, okay, alright.
I, I have a video camera and a tripod, and that might be enough, I mean, that's what they use for the Tri-City meeting, is they, I've got one just like that.
Yeah, we got one here, I think, I'll get with Robert tomorrow and see what we got, uh, we'll just film it, that'd be the best way, then you got the recording and-
Yeah, if nothing else, I've got an extra mic for it, and, you know, the dead cat on the top of it, I don't really need that, probably not a lot, not a lot of wind, but, uh, you know, stereo and the whole bit, so.
Just go get like a handful of GoPros, what helmet can we-
We could just all strap them on our head and walk around, something like that.
One question I've got on the layout of this thing, you talked about having a question and answer. Do, do we want, I, I thought we had talked about just having, um, our presentations, and then go back into the social setting, and that way people could come up and ask us questions or talk personally, rather than in a formal setting.
Do both.
Yeah, that's my thought, I mean, my thought was, there's value to be gained by having that question asked, so everybody could hear it, and then if they don't feel comfortable enough, and they don't wanna fill out a card, then they'll buttonhole you at the end and say, hey, Cam, what's the real deal on this?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we hadn't-
No, 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 I don't, I think we're just adding that-
Do both, okay, okay.
Portion to give them that opportunity, 'cause, you know, you've seen them, I mean, in a classic town hall, it's, I'll come, you know, you're, you know, whatever, you know.
So, holding, holding all the questions for the end, right?
At the end of, like, I, I guess mine will be the last presentation, and then we'll say, okay, question and answer time for-
Tammy, Tammy will have a bunch, people will, yeah, okay.
Anybody, yeah, any topic that we've talked about, and certainly feel free to meet the counselors afterwards, and talk to them about your specific questions, if, you know-
We, we do need to make that move, 'cause it can get bogged down.
Right.
So, you know, the, the large question, um, you know, tell me the entire history of the Webster Road property, see me after, let's chat about that after, but-
Well, and that's a good thing for the counselors to do, too, if somebody interrupts you during your presentation, you know.
They wouldn't do that.
No, I know.
Alright, anything else we need to-
Hold for the end, yeah.
So, edits back by the ninth, uh, on our little presentations, and Ross, will you then, since we're absent three, will you send that email out to all of us saying, hey, as discussed, you know?
Last time we got together, I sent you guys a little update sheet, I'll do the same thing again, and, uh, in there I'll have kind of our positive things that have happened for the year for you to look at, my foam board layout to the best I got.
And the deadlines.
Yeah, and the deadlines, and calendar, and all that stuff, um.
So, it would be nice if the stuff was out to us by the sixth.
Oh, I, I, oh, yeah.
But, yeah, so-
Or the seventh, and then give you a data.
That might be a suggestion in there.
Okay.
So.
So what are you doing on the sixth?
I'm here on the sixth of October.
Yeah.
I leave on the seventh.
So maybe, I'll talk to you, 'cause I, I, seriously, I can't, I can't get this crap on.
On your computer?
Yeah, dude, it's ridiculous.
In 2015, you should be able to type into a computer.
First time there's a glitch, like, I'll, I'll do one of these, and I'll, I'll put my glasses down, and I'll hit a key, and then everything will turn like highlighted, and then like-
So do you-
Do something, and then I-
Take your phone, put it in voice, dictate it all, then send yourself an email, and you're done.
Yeah, okay, sure.
I'll be glad to help you with it. That's what I do.
Okay, anyway, that's my problem, I don't wanna tie up anybody's time, so is that, we good, that's the work session done?
Yes.
Wow, so, do I bang the gavel to end the work session?
Yeah, I think so.
Alright, um, I am now closing the work session. Wow. Okay, I'm now calling to order the Gladstone City Council Regular Meeting for September 30th, 2015, it is now 6:24 PM. Um, Tammy, will you do the roll call, please?
Counselor Seigman?
Here.
Counselor Mercerow?
Absent.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Turner?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Absent.
Counselor Reidner?
Absent.
Mayor Jacob Ellis?
Here.
Okay, y'all join me in, uh, flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. There are no consent agenda items, there is no correspondence, correspondence this month, uh, moving down to the regular agenda, there is one item, number two, it's the second reading for ordinance number 1462, which is adding chapter nine, point one zero to the Gladstone Municipal Code prohibiting the establishment of marijuana facilities. Um, at this time, I will direct the city recorder, which is Tammy Bannick, to read the ordinance by title for the second reading, please.
Ordinance number 1462, an ordinance adding chapter nine point one zero to title nine of the Gladstone Municipal Code, prohibiting the establishment of marijuana facilities within the city, and declaring an emergency.
Uh, is there any staff reporter updates on this?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the one that was in your packet that you received on Friday did not declare an emergency. Uh, I'd taken that language out, I talked to the attorney, and he suggested we put it back in, and said it would be fine if I were to put the purple sheet out tonight with the emergency declared, so I have done that. That way it goes into effect basically as soon as it's passed, and we don't have any gap in October, as we had, uh, talked about last council meeting, so, at this point, it does also declare the emergency, which it did the first time we read it, and we're now consistent, so, my bad on that one, forgive me, but, uh, that's the way it is.
Um, does any council member have questions for the staff and/or discussion on this item?
None. Motion?
No, nothing yet?
My, I did have one question.
Yes.
On this particular topic, if it was written so that it was, um, within a certain distance of school zones, would the tax revenue still be available for the city, or would we still be excluded from it?
Um, the way I understand it, it's, you don't get the tax revenue unless you let the buildings be part of the city, so with this moratorium, you'll get no tax revenue.
So, if we put a, um, postipulate, or a code together that was no facility within, um, three-quarters of a mile of the school, it would push the areas out to a commercial zone, that would be a very, very small window, would that still exclude us from that tax?
No, if you do that, you get the tax revenue because you allow, um, medical marijuana in your city. I think that was what Mr. Doofman said last time we were together.
Yeah.
This is gonna pretty much preclude you from anything until the November election, and at that point, you're gonna, if, if everybody's in favor of it, then you gotta, you can do time, place, and I forget the third one for planning, time, place, and-
Zoning.
Zoning.
There are options.
Yeah, you can do after that-
Yeah, you can do after that, but this right now is gonna take you up to the election, and so the election's your next move, you won't get an opportunity before then.
Okay, thank you.
And we already do have a backup zoning ordinance that has been approved. Um, it was set up in case there was some, uh, court action or state law change requiring the city to allow them, so there already is things in place if we should decide to repeal this, or if the voters choose to, uh, allow them. We do have some zoning stuff already in place.
We, we have several marijuana ordinances, I'm not familiar with all of them, but it, it may, it is such a fluid situation, that it may be that what's going on at the state level may have already made those obsolete, they may not, they may not apply anymore, and so we could, we could literally be left with nothing. And as I recall also from what David was saying last time, if the people in November of 2016 say yes, then we should be able to then, then at that point, start charging three percent tax. I think I understood David to say that.
That's what I understood as well.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Uh, I will entertain a motion if anybody wants to put one forward.
I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance number one four six two.
Second it.
All right, uh, the motion was made by Counselor Johnson, and was seconded by Counselor Turner. Um, Tammy, will you please do roll call vote on the second reading?
Counselor Siekmann?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobellus?
Yes.
Okay, uh, all in favor, second reading of the ordinance number fourteen sixty-two has been approved, and an ordinance is adopted.
Yay!
All right, um, that's it for the regular agenda items, we're moving down to business from the council. Start with you, Mr.? Uh, nothing.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Nothing.
Wow, record time, I have nothing, thanks all for coming down.
Thank you, guys, for coming to a special meeting, sorry to do that to you, but I just didn't want that gap in October.
No, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, this meeting is now adjourned.